Okay, folks. Good evening and welcome to tonight's special committee of the whole meeting. The cameras are on, the microphones are on, and Jean quit. So perhaps I'll ask our...
It's a committee of the whole, so you can just acknowledge who's here.
Let the record show that all the alderpersons are present. Alderperson Maladra is participating remotely. First order of business is to introduce our new human resources manager, Lauren Newton. Lauren, come on up to the podium. You and I had a talk prior to the meeting, so you know what to expect.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening. It's been one month, almost one month.
A little over one month.
Isn't that something?
Yes, time flies, so...
Wow. Grew up in the Greater DuPage area, Carroll Stream High School, right?
Yep, Glenbard North.
Glenbard North, excuse me. Purchased your first home several years ago in, is it St. Charles?
It is St. Charles, yeah.
St. Charles? I've always loved the Tri-Cities. Yeah, that's just a, you know, come on. You had to throw that in there?
Mm-hmm.
Your husband's a U of I grad?
Mm-hmm, yep.
He's at home with Sienna?
He's at home with our daughter. She's 18 months, Sienna.
18 months, and they're tuning in, right?
I don't know. We'll see, hopefully, but, you know, with a toddler, it's hit or miss, so...
I can only, but this is being broadcast, so you can watch the replay.
Yep.
You've been in human resources for over 10 years.
Over 10 years, yeah.
After obtaining your bachelor's in HR management from DeVry University, you obtained your PHR, Professional Human Resource Certificate from HRCI, which stands for the Human Resources Certificate Institute.
It does, mm-hmm.
For those unfamiliar with HR, it is similar to what a CPA does for accountants. Is that right?
Pretty close.
Pretty close? This year I sat for the test. The pass rate was around 40%.
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yeah, that was back in 2016.
Way back.
Yes, mm-hmm. Yeah, and then you have to recertify for it every three years by obtaining continuing education credits, 60 credits every three years, so...
Oh, my. And when you sit for the test, you sit, is it virtually or do you have to go somewhere and take it?
At the time, in 2016, you had to go and take it.
Is that right? Somewhere close by, hopefully?
Yeah, they have satellite stations where it's proctored, so...
My God. Fortunate to have a progressive internship during my last semester of school and was hired by the Daily Herald in Arlington Heights. God, that's all closed down now.
It's moved.
It's moved, well, yeah, but, I mean, is the old building leased, do you know?
No, no, I'm not sure what they did with it.
Strange building, too.
Yeah, off Arlington Heights.
Yeah.
So there were about 500 employees when I worked at the Daily Herald, and we were an HR team of two, and the corporate office is right off of 90 over there, yeah, so they...
HR team of two with 500?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. It was family-owned, you know, and the newspaper industry's evolving, so...
Do they have any journalists there?
Yeah, there was a newsroom, a copy desk.
We'll edit that from the tape, so...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Spent the last seven years as an HR generalist at the beautiful city of Wheaton, Illinois.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Who said who? How do you know Wheaton?
Hornet. Well, hornet might be all by the phrase.
Okay.
Well, you and alderperson Maladra, who can't be televised for security reasons, went to the same high school.
All right, go Panthers.
Glenbard North.
Exactly. And I also lived in Wheaton for a bunch of years, so...
Craig, care to share what year you graduated high school?
Uh, no, that's all right. I graduated, I don't know if you were there when Cochon was there, but I graduated with Mark.
I was there when Cochon was there, yes. Uh-huh. Very cool.
Craig's prom theme was Wheels. It was like...
Okay.
"I don't have much free time," says Lauren, "but my husband and I love to ride our bikes as much as possible." And you, and how does Sienna join you?
Uh, she hasn't yet, but we do have a burly hookup. We just haven't taken it out yet, so we're working up to that.
You ride in the streets or the trails?
Uh, we take the trails.
Nice.
Yeah, we'll take the trails. It is, it really is, so...
And without disclosing anything secret, you, Lauren and her husband and Sienna live over near Red Gate and 25, which is, of course, accessible to everything.
It is, yes. We're right, right near the bike path, and it's great. You could take it either way, and it's scenic and beautiful and...
That's great.
Makes for a great, a great Saturday.
Now, you added this, because I never ask about this, but guilty pleasure TV show is Master Chef.
It's Master Chef, yep.
And I asked Lauren if she was a chef, and your response was?
I'm not, but I am a foodie, so Master Chef is, is my guilty pleasure when I do have time, and I'm a big Gordon Ramsay fan, so...
Who's Gordon Ramsay? That's the chef guy? Got it. Cool. And of course, your favorite food is?
Uh, I do prefer Italian fare usually if it's my choice, but I'm, I'm open to anything, so...
Because Lauren's maiden name is Bertolini.
Bertolini, mm-hmm.
And the Bertolinis, way back when, come from a little town in northern Italy called...
Lucca.
Lucca.
I was just there.
Were you just there? Isn't it gor, the walled city?
Very great. Wow, wonderful.
Isn't that something? And I was telling you, our daughter's name, Emma, the Emmas are from Lucca. Yeah, it was shocking, shockingly small world.
It is.
Wow. So a month in, life is good?
Yeah, life is good in Geneva, absolutely. It's been, it's been one month, but it's been great, so...
My God.
Yeah.
Being a foodie, have you sampled all the restaurants yet in Geneva?
I haven't gotten to Ella's yet, and I'm really excited to try it out, so...
Yeah, good stuff.
Yes, but I'm a big Gia Mia fan, I like Livia, um...
What, do you owe money to the owner?
No, no, I'm a, I'm a big fan, so my girlfriends and I, we like to frequent there, or big Graham's fan. I feel like the food in Geneva is so excellent, so you've got your, your pick.
That's great.
Yeah.
What else? Well, we talked a little bit about your high school career. You were on student government.
Yes, uh-huh, student council, uh-huh, and yearbook, so...
And yearbook.
And yearbook, yeah.
And I truly, they still do yearbooks, of course, but it's a different world nowadays, isn't it? On the yearbook committee.
I'm not, I'm not sure, yeah.
Who has a young person in high school, anybody?
On a thumb drive?
Yeah, literally, is it a thumb drive? I have no idea. Do they still produce yearbooks? They do. Oh, my God. What else should we know about you, Lauren?
I think we've covered it.
Yeah?
I think we've covered it, yeah, we've covered a lot. I'm very excited to be here, and it's an honor to work in Geneva and serve the residents here, so looking forward to working with all of you guys.
Thank you. Do you mind if I turn it over to the deists if there's any questions from any member of the council? The floor is yours. Your microphone, Mike?
You're a foodie, have you played with sous vide?
I, I haven't, no.
It's cool.
Okay, all right.
You gotta explain that. What is sous vide?
It's, uh, you vacuum seal your meats or any food and immerse it in a precisely controlled vat of water, so you can, it's a way to, like, you can cook, cook it like medium rare all the way through, then just give it a sear, and you're done. It's perfectly cooked all the time.
I'm gonna ask alderperson Bowring to explain this in German. Is this legit? Is Bruno being legit?
Yeah, cool.
So sous vide, huh?
I guess I'm gonna have to give it a try.
I'll lend one.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the deists? Well, we're delighted to have you on board.
Thank you.
Welcome. I know you're gonna be sticking with us tonight, so...
I am, yes.
And give Sienna and your husband our best.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, item three is to approve special committee of the whole minutes from October 9, 2023. Is there a motion? Motion by alderperson Marks.
Second.
Seconded by alderperson Bruno. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
The vote is 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent. Item four, consider draft resolution appointing the human resources manager, Ms. Newton, as the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund authorized agent for the city of Geneva. Is there a motion? Motion by alderperson Bowring, seconded by alderperson Patchkey. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Maladra, aye.
Maladra, aye. The votes, 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent. Item five is the presentation and discussion of the comprehensive, excuse me, the compensation and classification study results and recommendations. We are going to ask for a recommendation to advances to the city council, so in that regard, if I could ask for a motion to put this matter on the floor in a second, that would be appropriate.
Someone, a second.
Mayor, was that mayor? Patchkey?
Mayor and I at the same time.
At the same time?
It was a tie.
It was a tie? Then we'll give it to Cosgrove, no, mayor with the motion, Patchkey with the second. This matter is on the floor. Would you like me to turn it over to anyone here? Mr. McCready?
Yep. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce Rachel Skaggs from GovHR here with us this evening. And just a little bit of background, as you can see in the packet, this process started many months ago, and in that process, we embarked on endeavor to design and to evaluate and to look at the city's compensation and classification plan with a goal of affirming, reviewing, and determining what changes might be necessary to ensure that we have a fair, equitable, transparent, and financially sustainable plan for the city. Thanks in part to the efforts of Lauren, Mayor Johnson, as well as department directors and staff who all contributed to this, we were able to work with GovHR to get to the point where we're at this evening. We do have several recommendations to share with you and walk through this evening, but as the mayor stated, we will be seeking ultimately guidance from city council this evening, so we may return with the final plans and final, final steps to proceed with implementation of a plan. That being said, I want to stress, too, the importance of this. Some of you may recall having gone through this exercise before. We do do this periodically per the city's classification and compensation administration document. We do look at this from time to time with the goal to ensure that not only is pay fair, equitable, transparent for employees, but also to ensure that Geneva is aligned with the market. So thanks in part to the help from GovHR, we've been able to do a very substantial market study and prepare a set of recommendations and some information to share with you this evening. So without further ado, Rachel, if you'd like to take it away?
Great, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Do I need to turn this on, or...
Sure can, if you're live.
Great. Well, thanks for having me. My name is Rachel Skaggs. I am a senior vice president in classification and compensation project manager for GovHR. It's great to be in person. I do these presentations all the time, and I'm always remote, so this is only the second one this year that I've done in person, so it's really nice to be in person with you this evening. Just a little bit about me, and then I'll dive into the presentation, but prior to working with GovHR, I spent 10 years in local government management. I started my career as an intern with the Village of Montgomery, so very familiar with the city of Geneva. From there, I worked for the Village of Schaumburg, and then I moved back home after having kids and was the city manager for the city of Princeton, Illinois. And then that's where I still reside, so I had a nice little drive up here, and I've been with GovHR for four years, so...
My brother's roommate at Augustana College is from Princeton, Illinois.
Okay, what's his name?
Shop. This is a long time ago.
Yeah.
But Princeton's a beautiful community.
It is a beautiful community, yes, yes. Yeah, so is Geneva, so we, so Katie Yee is with me as well. She is a class and comp specialist at GovHR, and she actually lives in St. Charles, so we were able to meet for dinner before this, and she worked on some of this project, too, so she is along with us tonight as well. All right. Let me get this slide. Okay, so a little bit of what I'm gonna talk about. I'm gonna go over the scope of work that was, that we did, that was included in the study. I'll talk about the job evaluation process, which is really the internal equity of the organization, and that leads to the proposed classification plan. Then I'll go into the compensation survey, which is the external market comparison and external market study that leads to the proposed compensation plan. And then we'll spend some time talking about implementation and our recommendations for implementation. And then one important piece of any study is really making sure it's something you can administer and use for many years to come, so I'll talk about kind of the future administration of the plan and the system as well. And we'll have plenty of time for questions. I always say when I'm doing it virtual, like, let me know if you can't hear me, but stop me at any time if you have questions as I'm going through it. Happy to answer any of those. So the scope of work that was included with this study included kind of two components. So the first was that job evaluation analysis and classification system. So part of that, what we did was we had a study preparation meeting with the project team and kind of went over everything that was gonna be included. From there, we distributed materials to employees, so every employee received an employee letter that kind of outlined the study and the expectations of the study, and then we had a virtual meeting with employees. So through that virtual meeting, we went over the job analysis questionnaire that they were gonna fill out, allowed them an opportunity to ask questions if they had any, and then just met with them virtually. And then we put together the job evaluation analysis and establishment of the job classification system, which I'll talk about a little more in a few slides. On the external component, one of the most important things that we always do first is determine a group of comparable communities. So I'll talk about that, and then we send a survey to those communities, and that's kind of the compensation component. Right now, we're at the point where we're presenting on the draft report, after which, and once it's approved, it'll then be finalized. So overall, we looked at 60 positions, and each of those positions were reviewed using the following nine job factors, and that's really what we used to establish internal equity. So we looked at education, the required preparation and training needed to do the job. One thing that I always like to mention is for each of these positions, we look at the position, not the person in the position. So we look at kind of what are the minimum requirements to do that job, and that includes education, work experience, decision-making and independent judgment, responsibility for policy development, and also interpretation and execution of policies, planning of work, contact with others both inside the organization and outside of the organization, work of others or supervision exercised, working conditions, and then use of technology or specialized equipment. So each of those 60 positions were evaluated based on those nine job factors. So every employee would fill out that job analysis questionnaire. Supervisors and department heads would then review that. We always make it very clear in that employee meeting to the supervisors and department heads not to make changes to what the employees have filled out, so we really like to understand how the employee sees their job. Supervisors and department heads provide comments or feedback on that form. Everything comes back to GovHR, and then we have a virtual interview with at least one employee in each position, really just to kind of verify the information, expand upon it, and learn more about their position. Because although, you know, jobs are similar from one community to the next, they can't differ, so we wanna know, you know, what do they do here at the city of Geneva? And then from there, each position is assigned a job factor analysis score, and that's what leads to the classification plan. So that's the internal equity and how positions relate to one another in Geneva. So there was a couple instances where we recommend maybe future job title changes or job description updates that need to be made based on those interviews and discussions, and so there were some instances of that, but overall, you'll see on table one, there's 15 grades in the classification plan, so all 60 of those positions are somewhere within those 15 grades. On the external piece, the first and most important component when doing a compensation survey is really establishing those comparable communities. So when we establish comparable communities in Illinois, we always use these nine factors that are listed here, and that's because we have a consistent data source that we can use to get that information, so that it's consistent and reliable. We use the Comptroller's website, the Census Bureau, and Google Maps for proximity. So we use those three sources to collect accurate and consistent data. So we look at equalized assessed valuation, per capita income, total expenditures, proximity, population, number of full-time employees, state sales tax, indebtedness, and property tax revenue. So you'll see a full list of this on appendix B, but ultimately, we take Geneva's numbers for each of these, and the closer a community is to matching Geneva, the more points they would receive. So a community that receives the most points is the most comparable based on these nine job factors. And you'll see that list here. So then we establish a cutoff, so communities that received 80 or more points through all of those nine criteria were determined to be the most comparable, and here's that full list of communities that received 80 or more points. I was just saying before the meeting, usually on this slide, we put an asterisk next to the communities that responded, but we had so many that responded, we did the opposite and just put an asterisk next to the ones that did not respond. So we had a really good response rate and a lot of communities that responded to the We also, and Princeton has an electric department, so I was very familiar when we did this, we looked at different communities for those electric positions, obviously, because those are not gonna be in all those communities that we surveyed. So this list here shows the communities that we used for electric positions, and Geneseo was the only one that did not respond to that. So all of the data that we collect is collected through a survey, so each position is defined to make sure we're gathering accurate data. Again, we know that some communities might have a similar job, but maybe they call it something else. So we define each position before we send that survey out, so if another community is filling out that survey, maybe they'll say, oh, we have that position, but we call it this. We still wanna collect that data so that we can get market data for the position. So we define each position to make sure that we're gathering accurate data, and then we review all of that information to make sure that it is accurate for the position. You'll see in appendix C, I think it is, there's some data sheets that have two data sheets, so some of the data might have been edited out if it wasn't a true match, but we still show all the raw data. So each position has all the data that we collected for it, and then if we edited any of that out, you'll see a second data sheet with that. And then salary ranges are the preferred method to gather salary data, and we had plenty of salary ranges from the comparable communities, so that's the information that we used and analyzed to put together the proposed pay ranges. We also collected actual salaries, however, a lot of different things can go into those, such as, you know, longevity or maybe market for the position, so you don't really know a lot about the market based on actual salary. So we prefer ranges as long as we have enough range data, and we did in this case, so we were able to use salary ranges for the analysis. And then all of the salary data is the current market for the positions over the last few months, and that's just important to note because we know the market continues to change, but it's current as of when we collected that data. Okay, so after those two components were completed, we put together the proposed compensation plan, and we did it at three different percentiles, the 50th, 60th, and 65th. Sometimes I like to explain the percentiles quickly, so when we say 50th percentile, what that really means is 50% are above, so 50% of those comparable communities are above and 50% are below. It's a little different than the average, but it basically puts you right in the middle. When you look at the 60th, then you have 60% paying below, 40% above, so it puts you a little bit above market, and then the 65th is a little higher than that. And we'll talk a little bit more about percentiles, but I just wanted to give that overview quick. So on table one, each table one, you'll see the proposed compensation plan at either the 50th, 60th, or 65th percentile. So there's 15 grades, which each position falls within one of those grades, and those are established across four bands, and really, all the bands mean is what we see with the market. So there's grades one through five are kind of banded together, six through 10, 11 through 14, and then grade 15. All of them have, or sorry, grades one through 10 have a range spread of 35%. So from the minimum to the maximum, it's 35% different, and then grades 11 through 15 have a 40% range spread, and that's typical to see that, and that's what we see with the market, so that's why we've kind of recommended those two different range spreads. And then there's a 10% gradation between grades one through five. Gradation really just, really matches what we see with the market. So from grade one to two, it's 10% different, two to three, three to four, and four to five. It's also important to have that consistent gradation within each band, because if you get too low, you could have compression and other issues associated with that. And then grades 11 through 14 also have a 10% gradation, and then there's a little smaller gradation, but still a good amount between grades six through 10. That is 6 and 1/2%. We also looked at the sergeants and fire battalion chiefs, and that's on a separate plan, just given kind of the uniqueness with those salary ranges. So you'll see two grades, PS1 and PS2, for those two positions. We really evaluated those positions based on the market data that we received, along with the internal equity that we looked at through that portion of the study. However, it's important to look at those positions and ensure there's that internal pay equity, because we know a lot of time with the union positions and the frontline employees, as that increases, it can butt up against some of those other public safety positions. So you wanna make sure that you have a good separation between those. Typically, we recommend, you know, 5 to 10% higher, so I've communicated with Bennett some options on what you can look like, look at in the future to deal with that. You could bring up the minimum of the range and make it smaller, which we do see with sergeants and fire battalion chiefs, often the range spread might be 20% instead of 35 or 40%. So there's definitely some options, but right now, we've kind of put together a plan for those two public safety positions that has two grades. Okay, so back to the percentiles. So again, we've kind of recommended a plan that has three different percentiles, the 50th, 60th, and 65th. Some things that you might wanna consider when you're looking at pay percentiles and which one you wanna move forward with and adopt. So it's important to think about the current market environment. If you, a lot of times I get the question, you know, where are most of your clients at or what percentile? And if you would have asked me that four years ago when I was doing this, I would say, you know, 90 or 95 are probably payers at the 50th percentile. However, over the last year, two years, more and more, we're seeing people be at the 60th or 65th, just given the market and how hard it is to recruit and retain employees. So I think that's one thing to just take into consideration when you look at, you know, recruiting and retaining employees and what percentile you wanna be a payer at. We've done studies for St. Charles and some other nearby communities, and I do know that they are at the 65th percentile or above. Obviously, we have their data, so it's incorporated into our recommendations, but that's just another thing I wanted to note. And then, as I mentioned before, you know, being competitive allows you to avoid having to do re-recruitments, which sometimes I say costs more when you're retraining employees and they leave, and, you know, so having a competitive pay plan can really avoid some of those costs, and you can use it as a retention tool. And then TRICOM, which I almost forgot about, because that's been a while ago, we did their study as part of this, too, and presented to their board. We presented them the same options, and they did do their plan at the 65th percentile. So that's just something to keep in mind as we're talking about percentiles tonight. So overall, I think based on the city's financials capabilities, we would recommend you also go with the 65th percentile, but obviously, there's costs and finances associated with that, so I think that might be on the next slide. After I talk about implementation, we'll get into some costs. So our baseline implementation recommendations are always, for anyone whose present compensation is below the minimum, should be raised to the minimum as soon as possible. Anyone who's within the range can stay, you know, at their current pay and be slotted into the new compensation plan at their current rate of pay. This last bullet point doesn't apply, but if it did, this is what we would recommend anyone who's outside the maximum, so if someone was being paid outside the maximum of the range, we wouldn't say a pay cut, we would just say maybe hold them there until the market catches up. But again, that doesn't apply in this situation. Overall, I also forgot to mention, I think the city has a competitive plan. It wasn't really out of whack, there's just some realignments that need to be done when we look at the market data, so that is, you know, there wasn't a bunch of positions that were way below the minimum. I think the biggest part of it was looking at how people are slotted into the new plan based on longevity and how they're moving through that. So we worked with the city on a proposed implementation plan that considers employees' longevity. So it would be kind of a one-time implementation to get people where they should be within the range, and then moving forward, they would just receive their annual increases from there. So the proposed longevity adjustment would just be done one time at implementation and ensures employees move through the range. So the goal was to get everyone at or near midpoint by year 8, and then a little between, or sorry, between midpoint and maximum if they have 12 to 13 years of experience. So kind of slot them in on where they should be, and then going forward, they would just continue to move through the range until, or if they reach the maximum. And then we also reviewed the current quartile system that the city uses, and that's a great system, and we would recommend you can continue to use that. So when we look at implementation costs, obviously, depending on which percentile you go with and what that looks like, you can see the cost here on the screen. So at the 50th percentile, it's around $80,000. The 60th, it's around $135,000. And the 65th, it's around $190,000. There's, you know, some employees would obviously receive larger increases, some are smaller, but this is just the total amount. And then the next slide here would, shows the estimated mid-year cost, and this would include payroll and pension expenses. Because Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, mid-year, you would implement...
Yes, based on our estimates, we were looking at a mid-year December implementation for any changes.
Yeah, so this would just be if it was implemented at mid-year with payroll and pension expenses at the 50th, 60th, and 65th percentile. And then once a percentile is chosen and the plan is adopted, again, you want to make sure you maintain it annually. So you don't have to do a full study like this one. I always say 5 to 10 years, but hopefully closer to 10 years, right? As long as you maintain it and look at it and adjust it annually. So there's kind of two components to that. On the classification side, it's important to review positions and respond to changes. So let's say there was a position that maybe took on additional duties or got combined with another position. You might need to rescore that position and make sure they're in their appropriate grade. And we've given the city those tools. We're also here to help anytime if there is a position that needs to be rescored, you know, and help you move through that process. So we've provided the tools to do that, and you can create, adjust, or abolish positions within the plan as needed. And then on the compensation side, we either recommend you survey communities, not a full survey like we did, but just asking them what their most recent pay increase has been, take an average of that, or look at the CPI, and then adjust the pay ranges. And then the last bullet point, consider pay adjustments for employees. That would just be if a position does move a grade or a classification, you want to make sure that their pay is adjusted accordingly. So that was a lot of information. I know I'm happy to pull up the report. If we want to look at anything in there, go back through any of the slides. Can I answer any questions?
The floor is open for questions. If no one objects, I'd like to ask Alderperson Maladra first. Do you have any questions, sir, so don't forget about you?
I do not have any questions. Quite contrary, I just want to compliment you on a study that I think makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
From the DAS, Alderperson Swanson.
Thank you.
And Alderperson Bruno.
I have a lot of questions about various things, so I'll just move from topic to topic. I wanted to start out with the comparable communities. You had the nine criteria to evaluate, and you had weighted. How different are pay rates for those criteria? What do you typically see?
Pay rates for the communities, or...
Compensation rates. We looked at, you know, say, tax base, or indebtedness, or annual income for the community. Do you see a significant difference in how they compensate their employees based on those criteria?
Oh, so, not really, but the reason for using those criteria is to look at communities that have a similar ability to pay. So communities that, you know, are similar based on those financial criteria would have a similar ability to pay. But, so I guess we probably would see a correlation to pay rate based on some of those, but we've never actually looked at that to see, you know, if they have a lower debt, is their pay rate, yeah.
Okay. And the reason I looked at the...
That's a good question!
The data you had, I didn't see any correlation between the different criteria.
Yeah, I don't, so really, just looking at what is their, those communities' ability to pay, right? And then getting their, collecting their data and using that to compare the position.
Okay. You mentioned new job descriptions were recommended in some instances. That was not in the report. Could that be shared, what they were, or before and after?
I think a lot of it was, there was one, a couple of job titles in the report, but the job description updates were mostly like, let's say, we scored a position that said they needed a bachelor's degree, but their job description, or vice versa, says they needed an associate's degree. So we would say, update education requirements. And we did share that with the city.
Okay, so they were, they were minor tweaks?
Minor, yeah.
If you want.
Yeah.
Moving from, I think we had 43 pay grades, and now we're moving to 15. Is that typical? Is that what you normally see in the municipal world?
That's a great question. I believe it didn't start at grade 1, though.
Okay.
Right? Yeah. That was, that was one thing that we had looked at. But I think the important thing is, is you never want to have too many grades where employees are spread out too far, that the gradation that I talked about is so little, right? Maybe it's only 2% difference between the market of one pay to the next. So grouping them, I would say for 60 positions, anywhere between 12 to 18 would be the appropriate amount of grades, so that they're not too far spread out. So what we did, and I'm looking at Table 1 right now, if you see that skill level column, I think it's 50 points. So every 50 points of a position scored, you know, within 50 points, that's how we grouped them. So we broke it out into 50 points, which ended up giving us 15 grades. I think it's a really good number. That's not too big, where you have empty grades, or just a few positions in each, and then not too small, also.
Are comparable communities using a similar number of pay grades?
I can tell you the ones we have worked with are, for sure.
Okay.
Definitely. Let me look at that list. I'm trying to think, I think St. Charles, I don't remember right offhand, but they're, I know for sure they're around a similar number of grades.
Okay. And was there difficulty in some instances forcing certain positions into a new pay grade, either going up or going down?
I don't remember offhand if there was one, or, you know, if there was any issues that stood out, but we really look at the market data and average that data for all positions. So our philosophy focuses heavily on internal equity first. So if your position scored similarly to another position, it should be compensated similarly. So we always focus on that first, and then apply in that market data to come up with the range. I do think there's changes for certain positions where their range is probably, on the, for most cases, I think they're increasing, but there might be some, but I still think it gives every position room to grow within their range.
Okay. And my last question, in some of the detail, we had the results of the study of what the minimum and the maximum were kind of an average, yet when the proposal came out, some of them were different, and some of them significantly different. And my question would be why?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I'm going to go back to looking at Table 1, if anyone wants to flip there, so, or I could put it up on the screen, I guess. Let me do that.
Specifically, I was looking at the city administrator, not just because it was top of the list, was the only reason. And that 215, I believe, was the range at the 50th percentile, yet our proposed is 228. So I was wondering what bumped it up?
So we always look at a consistent range spread, right? So we'll try to match the minimum as close as we can, this one, and then go with that 40% range spread. So there's that, it's never going to be exact to the market, just because there's going to be differences. So we look at that gradation, and then also that spread.
Okay. Most were similar.
Yeah, but that does happen, you know? Even if you look at grade 13, you know, the market data is different, so we kind of take an average of that when recommending what the proposed ranges should be. So we kind of look at that gradation between grades, and then have that consistent range spread.
And the starting point is usually the minimum?
Usually, yeah. So like, let's say, for instance, when we're developing ranges for grades 11 through 14, we're going to look at the market minimum for 11, and the maximum here, and kind of develop the ranges based on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when you're developing the, from the study, from the results that you got from the comparable communities, if they only provided an actual, are they excluded from that range computation?
Yes.
Okay. So it may not be the entire population?
True, yeah. We do find that, yeah, that's a great point. We do find if you add in one or two, based on the number of communities that responded, it's not going to change the analysis, but that is very true. If they just provided an actual, we're only analyzing the range data.
It's an average of only who provided minimum and maximum.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have for now.
Great questions. Thank you.
Alderperson Bruno, then Mayor.
Well, I'll follow up with probably some less great questions. The, we're looking here at October of 2023. We're looking, given the labor market, you're recommending coming, coming in at 60, 65% to attract people. Now, this will be refigured, the next cycle we look at this, if, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, if we go 65% and everyone's moving along with that, well, then 65%, it seems like could be unstoppable pressure to, you know, inflate numbers beyond reason. You know, and I value, and employers are worth every, every penny they get. I just want some reassurance that coming in at 65% is addressing the pressures that we face today, and won't create other pressures when we don't, when we have a much more open labor market, let's say.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point, and it's a good, you know, if we were looking at the 50th percentile, or if that was going to be a recommendation, that would be maybe something I would caution against, just because it might put you, you know, if everyone's continuing moving forward there, it could put you towards, towards the end of that as people are updating their ranges. Another important component of this is making an update. So with your fiscal year, these ranges will need to be updated by an average to stay at that 65th percentile. So updating and maintaining them annually to make sure you stay at whatever percentile is chosen is definitely important.
Sure. But that leads me to, I interpret that as, once all of our comparable communities have jumped up to that level, then there's just more pressure to keep jumping. Now, if we have an economic downturn, there's lots of people available, we don't, we can easily get people. I'm, I'm still a little uncomfortable with the 65%. I just want to, I want assurance that that's not a runaway train.
Yeah, I mean, the market is definitely changing frequently, so, but this is a good capture of where it is as of now. And so if the ranges are approved and adopted at whatever percentile is chosen, as long as they're updated by an average. So let's say, May 1st, you send an email to the comparable communities, and the average increases, you know, 3.5, or maybe it's 5. If the ranges are updated by that percentage, you're going to stay paying at the, you know, the 60th or 65th percentile, as long as they're updated annually and consistently. I mean, there's definitely options if you're like going towards the 70th or 75th, you know, we just kind of explored these three options through this study.
Thank you.
May I chime in and just add to that? So if I heard your question correctly, looking at sustainability of such plan moving forward, and how that's adjusted annually, again, what, what is the cost of this long term? So one of the things that the city does now is when we look at this annually for unrepresented employees, there is a market and a merit component to compensation adjustments every year. The, the market component is really how we look at what, what is trending, what is happening, what's CPI doing, what are, what are our comparable communities doing? So should there be a change in the market? Should conditions change? That's how we are responsive to that year in and year out. So if we get to a point where the ranges are adequate, if we're able to attract the talent and the individuals and the skill sets we need to perform our functions every day, and to make sure we have the right people here, we're able to do that. But then again, if the market changes, we are responsive to that annually. We're constantly looking at that through our budget process to make sure that we are not leaping ahead, and vice versa, we are trying not to fall behind.
Alderperson Mayor, then Bowring.
So knowing that there's some critical functions here in the town, and that those critical functions are held by water, wastewater, and electrical, as well as fire police, I think fire and police are slotted where I expected. I guess I was surprised that we could, well, what you said about checking for pay equity in positions and making sure that pay positions were 5 to 10% higher than some of the union positions that they may supervise. I think the electrical department is an example where that's not the case right now. We only had three representative samples, or four, maybe. And I worry that with some of our employees having been here for a very long time, that the familiarity with our systems, the engineering sense that's involved is more than a, more than what it's classed at. And I wouldn't want to lose people, nor be able to hire the best for that department, and potentially for water and wastewater management as well. Just seems like really important positions for the public safety here in Geneva, and want to make sure that we're not just beating the competition, but that we get really classed people to do those jobs. So to what Mike was saying, I would think that in some of the maybe 10 and above positions, the range could be broader, so that the higher end could be more achievable. Or, you know, with, with merit-based review, people could earn more by staying here than having to leave to go to somewhere else that bumps up their pay because of some compensation study that's done by a different consultant. You know, I don't want people hopscotching, and I know that the next generation of worker is more likely to hopscotch than what we've seen, where we've been very lucky to have people for 30 years in all of our departments. That is, that experience allows the departments to run with less people, which is a tremendous benefit over having more employees. So that's my two cents.
Those are great points. One thing that I'll say that kind of we tried to do to handle that is the implementation structure. So if we were just to implement it without any adjustments based on longevity, you know, that would look a little different. And one reason we recommend and worked on that one-time longevity implementation was to move people farther within the range, because everyone probably fell, there might be a few positions that didn't, within the range, but based on their years of service, you know, if they were at market the whole time, they probably should be closer to that midpoint, or beyond. So by making those adjustments and moving them to where they should be, I think, puts them at a better place within the range, and then still having that annual merit component with the COLA to move them forward.
But like, in, in the electrical department, where we had such a small sample, do we reach out to ComEd or to other utilities that might have comparable employees where that would be where the employee source would be coming from in the future?
So we could, I know it's hard, we've, and I remember my time in Princeton, you know, and we were so remote there, but we had like Corn Belt and ComEd, and, you know, that were paying more, and that's where the employees would leave to go to. But the, the difference was, for our employees in Princeton, was they got to either stay in Princeton or travel. The region was a lot farther, so we, we had some give or take there. But I do think, you're right, the sample size was smaller, and I was just looking at it. So our methodology is typically, as long as we have at least three data points, we use it to analyze the data. And it looks like we had that for most of the positions. We could definitely incorporate private sector data points if we could get them, but we usually can't. We've tried in many instances, but they just don't have to supply that information, so they don't. I think looking at the percentile and, you know, paying in a higher percentile than the 50th addresses some of that, and then looking at those ranges annually to make sure they're still competitive. And also the grades, making sure the positions, you know, we spent a lot of time, and Ben worked really hard on that, making sure, you know, every position is classified correctly. But in the future, if positions do change, or you're seeing a lot of turnover, maybe you need to relook at how that position is classified and what grade they fall into to make sure they're still compensated. Another thing, based on your question, too, is having these ranges provides flexibility to hire within that range. So if you do have a position you're recruiting for, you know, you don't have to just post it at the minimum. Typically, we say up to the midpoint, but given on the person and their experience, you could even go beyond that, too. But you're right, those more technical positions that, you know, not every community has are sometimes a lot harder to fill and keep people in.
Thank you.
Alderperson Bowring.
Thank you. This is a really interesting report. I certainly learned a lot going through it. I had a couple of impressions. So first of all, I really appreciate the comments that Alderperson Mayor made. I think that's a really good point, and I, I guess I don't... that Alderperson Mayor made. I think that's a really good point. And I, I guess I don't, I don't want to delve too far down into the, what is, I forget the analogy, but you know, we're supposed to be taking the high up view. I don't want to delve too far down into your job, Ben. But I guess I'm, I'm a little curious if it's possible to extrapolate a little bit about, you know, again, like why superintendent of water, wastewater, which seems like it's a pretty big job, is a different grade than superintendent of electrical services. Don't feel like you have to answer that on the spot. But like, is it possible to, to get a little more background on that?
Not, not at all. I mean, I think I can provide some of that analysis now, which is part of the process we go through, working with GovHR, working with Department Directors' employees, is there, there's a substantial amount of data and input that's collected upfront. And so when that is, is taken together, it really gets into that classification analysis of looking at the skill sets, looking at whatever, what is required, and then looking at the practicality of, okay, this is what's required, but this is the, this is the conditions of how this person operates. And so we look at everything from education, supervision, working conditions. It is, it is all brought to the table then. And then that's, that's where there's the, you know, complex, where you call it the art or the science behind it of seeing where, where do these individuals fall in? Because no two, no two jobs are the same here. Everyone has an important job here and a critical, critical job depending on, to everyone, really, depending on if you need water, if you need emergency services. Everyone's job is critical at some point during the day. So when we put that together and we look at it, then we start seeing how do these positions stack up against each other? And then what is ultimately the market paying to get these sets of skills in that individual? So, so that being said, part of that was recognizing, I think, to Alderperson Mayor's point of looking at what is the actual market conditions for this. So the size, the scope, the budget someone may manage maybe relatively look like it's apples to apples. But then when we look at how this shakes out in the market, there, there are some different skill sets. And we did look at what we ultimately thought would put City of Geneva in a place to not only offer appropriate pay but competitive pay and be able to bring that talent to Geneva.
Thanks, Ben. So I guess I probably should have started with this. I guess I'm, I'm inclined to agree that going at the sixty-fifth percentile makes sense to me. So I just started in May. I've just had orientations with every department. The turnover that we've experienced, and I'm sure all of my colleagues are aware, has been tremendous. And I think that takes a toll really on every department. I think without exception, every department head that I sat down with, when I asked, you know, what are your concerns going forward? The two top concerns were there are probably going to be retirements coming down the line and we have open positions that are really hard to fill. So to me, it makes sense that we need to have both a recruitment and a retention tool. And I think that this is, this gives us that. And I, I guess I feel satisfied in the ability to examine it and evaluate it on a yearly basis, that we won't, you know, be getting way ahead of ourselves. You know, I point out also that, you know, inflation is probably impacting everybody, but certainly also our employees. So I think, again, coming above the fiftieth percentile, I think is, is warranted. But, you know, I think another issue is that, you know, I think in past years, we've gotten to the point where a lot of departments have become very lean. And I think we're, we're probably on the outside edge of that in some areas, is my impression from interacting with departments and seeing some of the issues that come up. So, you know, I, I think that this puts us in a good position if we need to create new positions, also to be doing that in a, in a smart and effective way. But again, as Alderperson Mayor pointed out, we have a number of employees in very important positions who've been with us for a very long time and might eventually want to do something else with some of their time than devote well, more than forty hours a week to keeping Geneva running. So again, I want us to be prepared for that and able to recruit people that are really, you know, going to, going to bring value to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderperson Kielberg?
You, you'd indicated that you'd interviewed a number of our, our salaried employees in this exercise. Were there any overriding themes that came across as related to those interviews as relates to their employment here at the city?
So most of those, so we interviewed at least one employee in each position and really just to learn more about their job based on those nine job factors. So we don't really dive into anything beyond what their position does in terms of, you know, workload and experience and all, or we don't talk about workload is what I meant to say, just mostly, you know, what their position does as it relates to policy, decision-making and things like that.
So compensation isn't a topic?
Nope, because we're just looking at the internal functions of the job. Correct.
There's a lot of data.
Yeah, I know.
You'd indicated that there were instances where there would be a need for a one-time adjustment. What, what would be the, do you have an approximate number as to what that might be with some of the senior or obviously the positions that are, are apparently lacking?
So, Ben, you may, yeah.
I think I can answer some of that. So looking at that sixty-fifth.
Are we looking at ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars to get it in line or?
Well, let me, the first, the first question is when we talk about the sixty-fifth percentile, we're looking at about forty-eight percent of the city's employees, I think forty-one individuals who, who fall in the study, who would be eligible or require some sort of adjustment. And that is really looking at the implementation strategy of saying, we strive to work with our, our system to get employees on close to about midpoint after eight years. So that's looking at when people move into the new system, into the new classification, compensation classification plan, are they on track still to get there? What adjustment needs to be made to make sure that they are not, you know, losing ground? And vice versa, making sure that no one is topping out or hitting, hitting hard parts of the plan. So to that point, if you're looking at the exact average here, I think, and I'm trying to think of how to explain this. So as part of the study, we looked at some individuals who would be reclassified into a higher level based on the information provided. And I will say this is, this is very few individuals. But at that point, you might be looking at, at someone who is seeing, and again, I think, let me see, I just would be speculating here. I can get you, I can get you a top-end number, but
No, that's.
You're looking at a range that starts off at below a percent and then goes up from there for, for those individuals. So everyone, some people might be a few hundred dollars off of where they're supposed to be. Some people might be several thousand dollars away from that. But I think that slide that Rachel showed earlier, and we'll have another handout for you, part of that was looking at, it's, yeah, that, that is a total annual cost, just dollars. But if you go to that second one, that is looking at a total cost across all funds, one hundred nine thousand, oh four three, that's our best estimate on that. And that's including payroll expenses, pension, payroll and pension expenses associated with the increases. That's, that's all in.
I think, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
I think you'd said a little bit earlier in your comments, what, what percentage or what was the number of employees that would be impacted by this?
At, going to the recommendation, about forty-eight percent are forty-one employees. And so keep in mind, this is a study that looked at, you know,
About half.
Eighty-something different individuals.
So half would see some type of a benefit from the study. Okay. And then my last question was the question of compensation. Is there any correlation that you look at as it relates to compensation where you look at your salaried employees as a percentage of the city's budget? Because, you know, one of the arguments in education, a lot of times with school districts is, is that, well, we pay our, we pay our administrators well, but we have fewer administrators than our competitive districts. And I mean, does, do you look at this at all as relates to the studies, your comparable communities?
We, we don't. So we just collect the market data for the position. That's more kind of staffing. So we do staffing studies where we look at the number of people in each position. But this was really just the market data for the position. So not
Okay, so you, you don't look at
How many people are in?
Or what, what the, the city's total budget is for salaried employees. And I know that would vary because we've got an electric department and we've got, we've got responsibilities in our community that may be different than others.
Right.
But it, you know, you have a number of different communities. It would be interesting to, to, to see, see what that would look like.
Yeah.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Kocserak?
Thanks, Mayor. I was wondering what our overall salary cost is currently? Like just general number, not dollars or?
Are you talking overall salary for?
Just our entire payroll approximately for a year.
I can get you that. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, well, where I'm going, I'll I'll tell you where I'm going with it, I guess, then, is the implementation cost, I guess, one hundred eighty-nine, seven fifty-three. So one hundred ninety thousand, that's what additional cost in one fiscal year would be, right?
Yeah.
Additional on top of where we're at now.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah, but the mid-year would be less because it'll actually be two fiscal years since you're already halfway through.
I don't know. It just seems to me, I mean, what is, what is the hard-to-hire positions, the hard-to-recruit positions, that number actually seems kind of low to me when you divide it among all of the employees that we have and the overall. But I was curious what the percentage was of the overall budget. That's why I asked what the budget was. But I guess my, my question is, is this, you really feel confident that this is going to somewhat solve our problems in hard-to-recruit areas?
I do think that being at the sixty-fifth gives you that competitive advantage. Obviously, you know, there's neighboring communities that are at the seventy-fifth, so they are a little, you know, at a higher percentile than that.
That's what I was wondering. So we're, I guess that, are we able to get some data on that? Like, here the comparable communities.
So we don't know everyone's percentile. We've asked before, so we know some. Let me see if I can tell you offhand. Like St. Charles is definitely seventy-fifth. There's this fresh in my mind. New Lennox is sixtieth. Bloomingdale we're working with now, Deerfield we're working with now. Blackport, I don't remember theirs. I think, I think they're at sixtieth as well. But I could get some of that information for you, so you would have that.
I feel like I might be going a little different direction than Alderman Bruno, but I do agree with him. Absolutely. We want to make sure that this is the runaway train and I totally get that scenario that he was talking about. But I also want to make sure we're not back here in five years talking about it's still hard to recruit and we're still having these problems and, you know. And I, and so I just, you know, if we make this change once every ten years or we do this study once every ten years, I don't know, I don't, I don't feel a hundred percent confident, at least without seeing some more data or, I mean, certainly your opinion and, and Ben's and, and Stephanie's. But I don't know, it just doesn't seem like a very big number to me for some reason. And I expected it to be more. I mean, I guess maybe that's good news. But again, I just want to be sure that we're, all these comparable communities, I don't know, I, I'm new to this, but it doesn't seem like all of them are necessarily relevant to our situation. Like Plainfield jumps out at me. I mean, that's a whole different area, different region. And I, I don't know, maybe somebody's willing to move or work, but that seems like, you know, kind of a, a long haul. If somebody's close to Geneva or St. Charles or the Fox Valley, Plainfield might not be in their, in their range. So I don't know, I'd like to see a little bit more of that. And maybe if you had any advice, these are our key communities that we're trying to, trying to compete with.
Yeah, I mean, I think proximity plays a huge part in, in that when you're working in local government. But then I, I think of myself personally, when I worked in Schaumburg, I commuted forty-five minutes, right? So I think it, it, some of these communities, even though they might seem a little far, it's still important to have their salary data.
Oh, for sure. I'm not saying it shouldn't
Yeah.
enlighten the whole scenario here and all the work. And you did a great job. I'm not taking anything away from it. I'm just saying, I think something feels a little too broad about it to me too. And, and so maybe I could see a little more information about that at our next meeting.
Yeah, we can definitely tell you which ones we know, what percentile, if that information would be helpful. I do think being, you know, at the sixty-fifth is a really, it definitely puts you ahead of market. I would be a little nervous if we were sitting here thinking about being at the fiftieth, but being at the sixty-fifth percentile, and we can even look at options beyond that as well. But, you know, I think the three percentiles with the sixty-fifth being our recommendation really gets you going where you should be. And then as long as it's updated and maintained, you could even, and we've had clients do this, where they'll implement at the sixty-fifth, but know they want to be at the seventieth or seventy-fifth over the next so many years. So maybe that's another option you could consider as well, too.
Tell me about, like, the next so many years.
What that looks like. Yeah. So we've had clients who have said, you know, I want to start at the fiftieth because maybe they're in a different situation, but want to be at the seventieth. So instead of just, let's say the average increases three percent annually, they're going to double that to move them ahead of the market as they go forward.
Okay. I'd be interested in that, too. And then I also just want to echo Alderman Mayor's comment about some of those technical supervisory positions that are really key to the health and safety of our community and making sure, sure those are reflected accurately. But if you believe they are, I trust you. I just, I do think that's a really important consideration. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good questions.
Alderperson Ruby, then Alderperson Marcus?
Thank you. I'm curious if you, I'm not sure who would know this, if we've ever had a situation where compensation has been limited because the supervisor has a cap, that they're allowed to increase that employee's salary by, that this would affect?
I'm trying to understand the question.
Okay, so let me ask another question. So the, all the data that you've presented is based on duration. I'm wondering if performance comes into the picture?
Yes, absolutely. So that's, part of the, part of the way we look at this is looking at under, under eight years and looking at where employees would need to be moved to. So in general, in our system, we are trying to get employees with acceptable, above-average performance to that spot. So is there the ability of, if someone, if there's been an adjustment or something over years for someone to get back on track? Absolutely. But that's why we typically use midpoint as our limiting factor. So midpoint is market. Midpoint is looking at what the market will pay for an employee who's competent, capable, trained, and able to do their job well. And so beyond that is where we start looking into purely based on performance. So by performance and by market adjustments, you continue to advance past midpoint. So compared to maybe how we've looked at this in the past, we've actually looked to see if employees, because of this being shifted around, are still not falling, we didn't want people to fall back through, back to midpoint based on this. So we looked at this a little more creatively, looking at some longevity, looking at employees who have been good performers and been here for a while, of making sure they were still maintaining some position within the pay scale. But typically, when we look at this, employees are, with good performance, are moving to market or midpoint in, in our about eight years of service.
Okay. So currently, if you have a stellar employee of eight years at annual review, is there, do you, you can only give them a, a raise to a certain, to the midpoint or?
Good, good question. So we have a quartile system in place and we look at, the quartile system is based on a percentage of market and merit increases annually that you are eligible for. The first quartile is eligible for a higher percentage than the fourth quartile, the fourth quartile being the top end of the pay range. So they are eligible for a merit, a market and merit increase based on where they fall at in the pay scale for your, based on your quartile. So you might be a little bit underneath midpoint or underneath the first quartile and with a compensation adjustment, you will pass that one. So sometimes we end up with employees just because of math and the numbers and the way it works, sometimes we end up with someone who might end up being a hundred dollars over or a hundred dollars under. sometimes we end up with someone who might end up being a hundred dollars over or a hundred dollars under. But in the end, we are trying to keep that scale, that process in place.
Okay. So if this is implemented, all the employees who fall short would automatically get a pay raise, regardless of their, just irregardless, it would just be an automatic pay raise, correct?
Yeah, so one-time longevity, but we always recommend a performance-based component going forward. So then increases would do the same that they have in the past with the quartile system.
Okay. And didn't we do this just five years ago, or when is, when is the last time we did this study?
Seventeen.
Okay. All right. And do we have any positions currently at the sixty-fifth percentile salary range?
Um, I'd have to go back and look, but I think we saw, you know, some that probably were, and some that weren't. You know, I think they were all across, but there weren't any that were, there weren't any that were over, and there were maybe a few that were right below the minimum. But overall, people were compensated within the range mostly. Obviously, more so at the fiftieth than the sixty-fifth, but even there, there's not too many, like, you know, really large significant increases.
Okay. And as far as employee retention, uh, do we know that any of our hard-to-recruit roles are, are related to pay? Is, is there any way to answer that, to know that?
I would say just, you know, based on, and Lauren, feel free to join us at the podium, based on our recruitment experience, um, even in the last few months, we've had positions we've posted. We've had, we've gone from a process where sometimes we had posted a position for two weeks or three weeks and received applications. We've gone to a process now where many of our positions are open and to fill by default. And we continue to work with our communications department, work with, uh, work with Kevin Starr, work with the hiring managers to try and get to every possible individual we can. You know, how do we get this seen by people? How do we get this out here? Um, and we often really try and promote the complete package of public service. Like, I mean, this is about the value you take in the position, the type of work you like, the type of work-life balance you're looking for. I mean, we sell not only the compensation, but this is the entire package of a job with the city of Geneva. So what I will say to answer your question is, our experience, based on the number of responses we're getting, I will say, you know, compensation is, is a question we get asked very early on in the process. It's Lauren, Debbie, myself, our phone rings, and we get that call before people even submit an application to us. Um, and it's probably a question that's come up, you know, multiple times in any interview process. So we know people are looking at this.
Sure. I, I agree. It's important, absolutely. No argument there. I, I just, um, I'm feeling like I'm hearing that better compensation is going to be, like, the answer to everything, and that, that's what I'm not sold on. So I'm just trying to look at the, the big picture, the, the whole puzzle. Do we have any data? I don't know if we conduct exit interviews. Do we know, if any, or how many of our employees have left due to salary?
We do exit interviews with employees. I will say that that is a topic that is discussed. I will say that we have employees as well. Just looking at the size and scope of our operations, sometimes people are seeking supervisory positions or managerial positions that are not available here. So we do have employees who are aspirational, looking for those next level jobs. And as you might imagine, taking on a supervisory role, taking on a management role often includes a significant jump in compensation.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Good questions. I'll just add real quick, too. I think you're, you know, you're right. Compensation is a component of it, but culture and everything else kind of plays into that as well, so, that's a good point.
Just a moment. Alder Person Marks, I believe City Minister Dawkins has the answer to Mr. Kassarag.
This is not an exact science, but, but looking at the budget and trying to extract those classifications that are union employees, I can't quite do that on the fly, but it looks like if we're looking solely at full-time, unrepresented employees, our annual budget for this year is six point four million dollars. That would be wages only. That's not benefits. That's not overtime. That's just base wages.
You said six point four. Thank you.
Alder Person Marks, um, great study. I mean, I, I've seen a couple before this. I, I like the pay grades being reduced to what they are. I think that's really, um, helpful for us. I guess, Ben, maybe this, I don't know which one this, this question should go to, but, you know, I guess I'm feeding off of Alder Person's mayor, where I see two grades here that the maximum is below what we're, what we're offering now as our maximum. And do we feel that might hurt us in recruiting those positions? You know, if you look at, in the sixty-fifth percentile, you know, if you look at fourteen, our, our maximum now is one ninety-two, and it's going down to one eighty-eight, if I'm reading these charts right. And do we see that as, as a hindrance to us? Because we're dropping that maximum in, in two areas that really are critical to this, to the city.
Yeah, so...
So who gets that one? That's why I said, I didn't know who got it.
No, that's, that's a good point. And so one of the things, though, like, at the sixty-fifth, when I'm, hang on, I'm going to move it up here so we can all look at the same thing. Okay, so you're looking...
I'm looking at the sixty-fifth, when I, yeah, when you go over to that proposed, yes, those two, yes.
So you'll see this was kind of, some of these positions, some of them are, it's going up.
Right there, yeah.
But then these ones, it is going down. However, I think what we found, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of these positions weren't at, or close to the maximum. And so by moving to the sixty-fifth percentile, which is really an average of this data here, you know, so we're even a little above the average at the sixty-fifth for the maximum. And then making that longevity adjustment provides them an opportunity, you know, to move up closer to that maximum if they're eligible. And then with next year's increase, it's going to probably be right back to where it was, and then it'll continue to go up. So I think overall, that is something we noticed and recognized, but given where those positions fall, given the market data, I felt comfortable recommending this as the maximum, knowing pretty soon it's going to be back up to over what the current maximum was. And no one was falling close to that, if I'm correct.
Correct. And I would say, especially as we look at the sixty-fifth percentile, it's, it's difficult to apply absolutes to so many different positions and individuals who arrived at where they are, who all took a different path to get there. Promotional policies, new hires, difficult recruitment, so everyone is, is at a different spot in their journey here within this range. To that point, though, and again, I would call attention to the same thing Rachel did, is looking at what the sixty-fifth percentile is. So part of this, as we go through this, it is making adjustments. So some employees have ranges that are increased, some more than others, but some by a few thousand. But again, we're looking at ranges that are substantial, that are appropriate. And so you have a little bit on each end where we say, listen, based on the methodology trying to apply, we know that we are within fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars of the ideal salary survey data. And then vice versa, you have some, some go up, some go down. So that, as you point out, this is one where the top end has gone down. And to Rachel's point earlier, when we advertise positions, we are typically advertising up to or just below midpoint. That's part of our compensation classification administration right there. But that being said, um, many people, when they get a job description, or they ask us for more data, they do want to see the whole compensation and classification plan.
Okay. Um, I guess, Ben, my, my next question, I know is probably going to be for both of you also, but I know he'll know it. You know, you came before us a few months ago, really, with, with our benefit package, you know, which, some of that stuff I was shocked at, that people can't take vacation before so long. This wasn't any part of, of this survey, right? This was just straight...
No, we were just looking at compensation and our classification system.
And so our benefit package didn't come into this at all, correct?
No.
Do, do you look at that for other communities?
Sometimes if it's involved, no, that's okay. Some studies involve benefits, which is sometimes a good thing to look at, but overall, we find that municipalities really all offer the same thing.
Okay, well, that's fair, well, that's good to know.
Sometimes I do steer clients away if they're trying to save costs, like, well, you don't have to do the benefits because most, it's usually, our recommendation is usually always you're right at the average.
Okay. Well, no, that's fine. I, I, that's good to hear, to, to be, to be honest with you. I'm really good to hear. Then, I know this next question is for you, and I saw it on the fiftieth, the sixtieth, and the sixty-fifth. There's an asterisk next to the city planner, and I could not find anywhere what that asterisk was.
That usually means that we use the actual salary survey data instead of the range data because there wasn't enough, and I'm sorry it's not down there, but let's just go...
I could not find it, and may have been...
I'm going to see unless it was a mistake.
I might have missed it. It could have been in one of the appendices that I just, I didn't spend as much time in those. Oh, I would apologize, but I just didn't understand that.
Well, nope, see, and we didn't. So that asterisk probably shouldn't be there because we have enough range, plenty of range data.
Okay. Just, I couldn't figure out what that was, and I just wondered what that was there for.
Right, we'll fix that before we finalize it. Yes.
I just wanted to know. I, I wasn't sure why that was there. So, I, thank you. We're going to put an asterisk next to your name in the minutes. There you go. That's fine. And then we'll, everybody will guess why. Alder Person Malodra, happy to recognize you if you have any comments or questions?
I, I do not. I think the discussion has been great, uh, but pretty much it goes back to what I said at the beginning. I think that this study, as Alderman Marks was saying, that this study of all the ones that I've seen felt to me to be the clearest, um, starting with the job classification and the exercise to align pay accordingly. So, job well done.
Alder Person Pachki?
I would agree. I appreciate the... Thank you. I, I agree, um, and I appreciate all of the questions everybody else has asked. I think that's helped to fill in, um, any other thoughts I had. Being new as well, I did go through the meetings with the departments, and similarly heard the, the biggest concerns being brain drain and being, Geneva being a training ground for new employees who go on to other places pretty quickly. Based on your comments about, you know, considering the cost of bringing on new employees, training new employees, I think it's important to keep that in mind. Being a city employee myself in another city, I hear the chatter about why people leave, and it has a lot to do with pay, um, and I know people that have looked at positions here and chosen something else. I do think, looking at, you know, the overall budget, I think the sixty-fifth percentile puts us in a fiscally safe and, um, secure position. I think it may be a little safe, and I agree with Alder Person Kassarag, that, um, considering a plan that might move us to the seventieth would be probably a good idea. Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and I would agree that the sixty-fifth percentile looks, looks good.
All council persons have spoken. Is there anyone who wishes to speak a second time? The floor is wide open. Alder Person Kassarag?
Just a very quick question. Is this, uh, when we adopt this, is it codified, or is it guidelines? Is this like, you, literally, it's against the law to go over?
So the, there's a few different factors that come into play. One is, this gives us the framework from which we build the budget around. So information based on here tonight, and then subsequent approval, would then allow us to proceed with building the budget for next year. When we build the budget and we put the personnel expenses in there, that's where you are authorizing and providing staff with the authority to then hire within these ranges and within what we estimate personnel expenses to be based off this. So I think that's, that's the very high-level answer to your question. But it is not codified, per se, in city code. But as part of the annual budget process, you saw that, um, in the report that was handed out, you saw those pages that offered what the percent, um, what the ranges were at each percentile. That is always adopted as part of the budget. That's included in the budget. So when that is authorized, people ask, you know, or if we get the questions or the inquiries, what is the approved pay ranges and scales for this next fiscal year? We turn to that budget. I can be, this is what was approved by city council.
Can we do talk about a classification and compensation plan in the personnel policy manual? So that's where the policy came, that we did this study, is that it said that we would have a formalized plan of compensating our employees, and that we would be reviewing that on a periodic basis and those kinds of things. So that's where it's codified, and then when you actually adopt, if you were to adopt whatever the recommendation is, for that particular, this particular time, we would likely have a resolution that would outline what it is you have adopted.
Okay. I was more curious. Thank you.
Alder Person Bowery?
I guess, given that this possibility has been set out there by Alder Persons, Kassarag, and Pachki, I just wanted to put out there that I would also support leaving ourselves the latitude, or perhaps spelling out more concretely, if there's support for that, moving beyond the sixty-fifth percentile. Something that struck me in looking at the particular positions, and, but then it's also helpful seeing it laid out, you know, the total outlay mid-year or full fiscal year. It's not a huge amount of money for what I think is potentially a pretty big return on investment for the city if we're able to more effectively retain employees and recruit really top talent, which is what we want. So, again, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, continue to take market forces into play or into account as we move forward, but I would support moving past the sixty-fifth as well because, you know, again, it's, it's not, it's not really huge dollar amounts when you look at our overall budget, and when you look at the overall amount that we're spending on personnel. And I guess I would just say, you know, I see our staff as our biggest sole asset, um, and I think it's important to, to demonstrate that through compensation first and foremost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Mayor?
So, um, I guess my, to get back to my concern, which is that it seems like there's some highly technical positions that are actually getting downgraded here. The group in eleven that starts at manager distribution, construction, maintenance, fire marshal, superintendent of water wastewater, that were previously all classed as one hundred and forty-two is their max, are now being classed as one hundred and forty-one if we go with the sixty-fifth percentile. I think that that's a mistake. I, I think that we'd be doing ourselves harm to not keep them at least at their current. And, you know, I can see that a deputy, deputy chief of police, deputy fire chief, and superintendent of electrical services used to all be in the same group, and now they're not. And that one is now being maxed out at one hundred and fifty-five, and I also think that that's a problem. I think that, um, that's right on par with, uh, each of those positions that it was with before. And, uh, you know, I think the rest of the sixty-fifth percentile puts us in a good position. I'm just worried about this grouping of, of roles that were previously higher at the high-end range and now are being, uh, pushed down to a, a lower cap. They're all, you know, in the succession planning of being the next, uh, number ones in each department, and we're putting them in a worse position than they were yesterday.
Yeah, it does fall very close, but you're right. It is a little. So the proposed maximum for grade eleven is one forty-one-four. There's positions that in there that the current was one forty-two, three fifty-nine. You did mention them, it doesn't look like they were in the same grade as any in twelve or thirteen.
So, um, superintendent of electrical services was previously classed with deputy chief of police and deputy fire chief.
Okay, but they're...
And now they're in a different, it's in a different group that has a lower cap in the sixty-fifth percentile. So one hundred and sixty-four was the cap for superintendent of electrical services, and now it's one hundred and fifty-five. You see that?
Oh, I see. Right here. I was looking, I was looking down here. Okay. Yeah, so...
I, I think that those will be hard positions to find replacements of, and I worry about that.
We can look at the, the scoring. I go back to, you know, anytime we do this study, we always focus heavily on how the position scores based on those nine job factors and, um, not really comparing current positions, but I totally understand what you're saying there. You know, I know we spent a lot of time making sure we're comfortable with how each position is scored based on internal equity, but that's definitely...
But I think you have to look at that lineman make, you know, the form... But I think you have to look at that lineman make, you know, the foreman of electrical makes more than both of the, the managers. It's not equitable.
Yeah, and it goes a little bit to that discussion we had with like public safety, and I think you mentioned that earlier. And those are like, you know, unique, electrical services in any government is unique services, right? And they do compete heavily with private sector because a lot of these other public safety or public sector positions, some of them, but a lot of them are offered in the private sector, so you don't have that kind of additional market pressure. So I would have to look at the specific scoring for that position, and Ben, maybe I can do that and provide some additional feedback? Okay.
Thank you.
Alder Person Kocarag.
I was just gonna say maybe.
If I may, Brad, just interrupt for a second. Our next meeting, if this is advanced with the positive recommendation of the council, our next meeting is on November the 6th. So there's ample time to probably suss a lot of this stuff, so.
My, my comment was gonna be, does it, would it ever make sense in your world of what you do to have some job categories be 70th and some be 65th? Or is there some reason everything has to be the same percentile?
So I never recommend that, that's a great question, and I've gotten, people have asked that many times, but for internal equity purposes, I never recommend different percentiles, everyone should be paid at the same.
Okay. My second comment was just gonna be what you guys are looking for from us tonight as far as recommendations.
From today, is anyone else? Alder Person Kilburg.
No, I, I'm just wondering, those are going to be situations where there, there needs to be some tweaking. And I'm just wondering that if it wouldn't make more sense, rather than to tinker with it, with, just to give staff, the mayor, in the budget discretionary funds to, to deal with, with hiring needs or inequities or maybe the retention of a key employee because of salary, where sometimes you may stray from, from those maxes. I mean, you see that in industry. I'm just wondering if, if other municipalities might do this where you give, give our, our staff the latitude to, to, to work from a budget that's approved by the council to, to deal with those hiring issues.
So typically, we always say stay within the ranges though, so allow them that flexibility but within the proposed ranges. Because I think it creates another internal equity issue if you do have people, you know, being compensated outside of those. Maybe instead there's a reclassification of the position, but if staff has the flexibility to regrade or rescore a position, like if you're recruiting for a new position, maybe the grade needs to be changed because of additional duties or something. But typically, we wouldn't recommend going outside the maximum of the range.
Is that because salaries are public knowledge and that these things are researched and people will, will question?
Well, I think so, but also knowing that all of your pay ranges are competitive with the market, like it should provide you with a good range to hire within that range and not have to go outside of it. Maybe if there's like an, you know, an extreme circumstance, but I've never had that become an issue.
Okay.
There has been instances where current employees are paid outside of the maximum, and clients have continued to pay them knowing they're outside the range, just because.
Well, it might be a critical hiring need, or you, you've got a number of different issues within a certain department, and you've got a key candidate, and you want to make sure that you get them. I mean, you can hire within the range, but if you don't get the right employee, are you doing yourself justice?
If, if I may interject, just as part of our process and part of what we have, as part of our administration of this document is, in fact, it's written in one of our documents that should we go and conduct a recruitment that is unsuccessful? And we strongly believe that for some reason the, our position is very different than what the market's recruiting for, advertising for. Our, our instructions in that are, one of the options is, we might, may need to go back through and look at the point factor evaluation and look and see, has this position changed? So I will say, one of the things, you know, and several of you made comments, I think you're picking up on the things here as well. This is an intricate approach, you know, looking at compensation for something that's near and dear to, to many people and very personable. So as we get into this plan and we look at this, you've noticed that some of our pay ranges were already at, close to, maybe a little above or a little below the 65th percentile. That wasn't by design, we've been, we're going off of data from previous salary studies. And so at that point, using a different set of comparables and a different market, we had benchmarked to the 50th percentile. So even though we said that was the 50th percentile, now doing this more, you know, what I'd say is very comprehensive look at the market, we've determined some of ours we're already at are almost close to the 65th percentile. So some of these, they said, when you look at some of the minor adjustments, the up and downs, it's because we're all, some of them we were already almost at, close to being in the ballpark of the 60th percentile to begin with. But I think, I think that's an important thing to recognize in the process. And like you said as well, when we, when we do this, we're not necessarily always thinking about the individual, but we're looking at the skill set, and jobs evolve over time. So that's part of what we see happening here as well. When we go back to the roots of this plan, which, first time being able to use this in a meeting, but we're talking about a time when I would have been in high school, there's vestiges of that. There's vestiges of, hey, in 2003, when we had X staff and the department was structured this way, this position was, was here. And now when we look at the reality of it, it's like, oh, this position is here in the organization. Like it's taken on new duties, their job has become more complex, they supervise someone else. So the position has fundamentally changed. And vice versa, maybe a position that used to have equity with another position or maybe the hour, the fundamental expectation of hours have changed. You know, I, I dare say I don't think necessarily work is ever becoming less complex, but maybe the type of work that is done or the assistance that is there for that person has changed. So that's part of looking at a position that was, you know, used to be grade, I'm just gonna use our grades now. You know, if it was, if it would have been grade nine in 2010, it might be a grade eight now, or it might be a grade 11. So there is a little bit of that kind of area when you get close to how the point factors turn out. Thank you.
What was our motion?
The motion was to recommend advancing as presented. I would share with the council that we have an opportunity tonight, and we have an opportunity on November 6th. If you wish to amend what's being recommended, you can do so this evening, or we can wait till November 6th, and that could be amended at that time as well. So I will defer to the council, and this is echoing the statement maybe Alder Person Bowery, if there's an interest in doing so. And that would be a condition that, as I understand it, it would be a, and I don't know how to phrase this, a goal to advance to 70%. I don't know how you, is that clear to the professionals, that that would be a, Ms. Gags?
So I think that would just be an addition to our report on what that recommendation would look like. So if, and then that could be something you could consider November 6th.
Okay, are you comfortable with that, Alder Person Bowery?
Yes.
So tonight, as presented, is to start at the 65th percentile.
Correct.
And then in the future recommendations or the maintenance is to advance it. And is there a timeframe we're looking at, or just as it makes sense?
I guess I, I did not have a particular timeframe in mind, this seems like something that you've done for other municipalities.
Yeah, we could put options in there, like a one or two or three, yeah.
So, so we can say that that's what's been presented tonight, so that's what you would be advancing for consideration at the council meeting. But again, that can always be amended and changed at that point.
Exactly, so. Anyone else, Alder Person Ruby.
Thank you, this may be a separate topic. I'm just curious if we're, if there's any interest in looking at elected official salaries and knowing that that would not affect any of us, but for future, knowing how many uncontested elections we have, if that's something worth looking into.
And I can say, we've done that in the past, that's information I think that staff can easily gather and present. And there are timeframes, as you mentioned, that you need to do it before an election and who it applies to. It only applies to those council members that would be elected in the next election and not to anybody that's currently in office, but those are, I mean, we can, I mean, I don't know that, not that I want to take work away from Gov HR, but that is information that's readily available.
Okay, great, thanks Stephanie, and also, can you refresh my memory? When is the last time that there was, was it 1974?
Oh, that the. I don't remember the last time, but I do remember that the last discussion of increasing compensation occurred during my tenure.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we had, we had a discuss.
Wow, thanks Dean, should have just asked you. Thanks.
On the matter at hand, pardon me, I'm afraid to say anything. Anyone else on the issue that's been advanced, or excuse me, motioned by mayor, seconded by Pachke? Are we comfortable with advancing it as is with the language that Ms. Gags will add to the final proposal on the 6th? Okay, we're gonna take, I'm gonna take a roll call on this just so we're all clear as crystal. Jean, whenever you're ready, thank you.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kocarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With 10 votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and zero absent, item five, the presentation and discussion of compensation and classification study as presented has been advanced to the city council for final review and recommendation on November 6, 2023. Public comment, I sense there's none, unless someone snuck in, new business? Oh yes, Alder Person Bowery, then Alder Person Kilburg.
Thank you, so I actually had two items I wanted to bring up as new business. One is I wanted to assess whether there was support on the council place for two issues that relate to conservation that I think are readily attainable by the city. One is whether Geneva could provide information to homeowners about leave the leaves, which is something supported by the USDA, Illinois Extension, numerous local conservation organizations. In essence, it's the idea that you can leave some or all of your leaves where they fall in your yard. I think there's potentially a lot of either misinformation or lack of information about how this would work, but it's a purely voluntary thing, really like an educational program where we would put something up on the website, send something out in the newsletter so people could know that this is something that has numerous benefits, provides a place for small animals and pollinators to overwinter. If you have a pile of leaves or leave some leaves, if you run your mower over them and mulch them into your yard a bit, if you rake them onto garden beds, it's actually a natural and really unofficial form of mulch, you don't actually have to buy that. I would note that lots of our neighboring communities, or some of our neighboring communities have embraced this, Neighbor Village had an event that they hosted with the Conservation Foundation to try to promote awareness of this. So, you know, I think there's a certain amount of feeling, well, if everyone is raking or blowing all their leaves to the curb to be picked up, then I, I should do that too. And it actually turns out you can be more lazy and really help, help out your yard. So, that's one issue, I'd like to hear whether other people are supportive of that, and then I have another idea, so.
Count me among the lazy, I've been mowing mine in for years, and as long as you don't commit, you know, a lot of staff for like a campaign, but if it's just updating a webpage or throwing it in the newsletter, I'm all for it.
Information is great.
It's, this is coincidental, but actually I received an email and Becky received one as well today from a gentleman living in the 3rd ward. And he, his comment was that he feels that a lot of the oak trees in Geneva proper are, are, and a lot of the older trees in particular are currently being challenged because of drought conditions and then the excessive wet conditions. And his suggestion is, is that if you have oak trees, he, he strongly encourages to leave the, the leaves as an element to help these trees recover. And he also said that even mowing those areas is ill-advised at the present time. I don't know, Beck, if you had an opportunity to read that memo from him, but I thought it was insightful. And, I mean, he had all ki, first of all, he prefaced all of his degrees as an arborist, and these were what he strongly encouraged. So, there, there is some, some similarities to what you're saying as well, so.
It sounds like there's support, I guess I just want to ask of staff, given that it is the end of October, does that seem doable? I think there's a fair amount of readily available information publicly available from places like USDA and Illinois Extension. And again, what I'm thinking of is something on the webpage where the leaf collection program is discussed, just letting people know that this is an option. And again, it's, any amount you leave is great, it doesn't have to be all, if that feels like too much, any amount of this is really beneficial. Does that, does that seem feasible?
I think that's feasible.
Okay, great, in future years, I'd love to see us do more, but I thought that was a good starting point. And then my other proposal to see if there's support for it is this idea of no mow May or low mow spring. I brought it up with staff, I think just before I came on the council, and it was really too timely, there wasn't really time to explore it. The idea with this is that there's not very much blooming to help local pollinators in April, May. And so the US Forest Service, among others, recommends not mowing any grass in your yard for the month of May. This allows things like creeping Jenny, violets, daisies, whatever you have growing, even dandelions, to provide a source of nutrition to local pollinators, and then by the time May ends, there's a lot more blooming. The reason I wanted to bring this up now is that we do have a city ordinance that states that lawns can't be more than eight inches. When I did this with my backyard this spring, I'm not sure my front yard got, or my, sorry, my backyard got beyond eight inches, but I guess it seems like this would entail looking at whether we would need to amend that code in order for homeowners to, or residents to participate, again, on a purely voluntary basis in something like no mow May or low mow spring. But I wanted to see if that was an idea that also had support on the council so that we could, we could have the time to figure out what we needed to do at the staff level, so, thank you. I, or you know, I welcome hearing whether other folks are interested in this also.
Alder Person Kilburg.
I think that making an announcement encouraging residents to do those things that she's just discussed, I think all makes sense. I mean, obviously, it's a personal choice, but I think to educate and to, to try to spread the word as to those programs that are promoted on the statewide level already, I think certainly would be appropriate. And then I had another item, are we done with that topic, if there's others that want to discuss it?
Well, I was, I was gonna pipe in similar to Alder Person Kilburg. I am interested, it didn't occur to me about our ordinance and whether we write in, you know, we turned a blind eye for May or something for, for the length of grass, but.
And there is significant research on both sides of the issue regarding no mow May. We all know it started in Great Britain, and it's been adopted throughout this country. And there are, I would encourage all of you to check out the research on both sides of the issue, and then perhaps come back at a later date for a more robust discussion, so. That's my thoughts, but.
I think that sounds like a great idea to discuss that. I agree with Alder Ben Bruno, I hadn't thought about the code. That sounds a little touchy to me, but as far as having it in our communication and our newsletter and encouraging people to do it, I think probably sounds like a great idea and some we can maybe discuss early in the year, next year, so we can be prepared for it. Do we need to remember, or?
Yeah, we can remember, I think. I think we should recommend dumping our leaves and staying charles.
Don't we already do that?
Ald, Alder Person Kilburg, excuse me.
I had a different subject, or if we're finished with this one.
Can I go before?
Excuse me, you want to chime in on the?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Is it eight inches, our, our code is eight inches?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think by the end of May you're gonna have eight inches.
No, unlikely. No, unlikely.
Oh, no. In my yard, I mean, it gets warmer sooner now, so it gets growing pretty well. I don't ever take a ruler out, Dean, but it gets pretty long. So, I, I'm in favor of it, but I can hardly stop my lawn mowing husband from mowing the lawn. I mean, I, I, I'm not sure that we could make it all the way through May.
Alder Person Pachke?
I'll just add that I have read the information on both sides and agree that it, it will make for a lively discussion.
Way to go. Yeah, we could have, I think maybe we, yeah, kick it off.
Add in whatever else.
Yeah, we could have a big policy night, if you will, and discuss all that. I, I will, this is prior to television, but to Alder Person Bowery's, or for Alder Person Bowery's benefit, there was discussion many, many years ago regarding eliminating the leaf pickup program. Remember that?
Wasn't that many years ago?
Oh, feels like it was a century ago.
For real?
Yeah, that went over like, oh, man. For what it's worth, it's fascinating, fascinating. We've already received phone calls. I've received phone calls, professional staff have received phone calls, asking when certain people's leaves are gonna be picked up. It's amazing. But, yes.
Sorry, I want to let Dean get to his new business as well. I just wanted to clarify, are you proposing, did we close the leave the leaves topic, and now we're talking about a policy discussion for no mow May?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's, sounds great. Thank you.
Because one is more educational in nature, and one requires more action from the council.
Alder Person Pachke on this topic?
Yeah, it is on this topic. It is on this topic. With the leave the leaves, I do wonder, though, I know they, I know there's a bit of yard collection in the spring, but I seem to remember them discussing that that's over-relied on in some ways. And so, I wonder if that might need to be addressed, because I think, I know when I leave the leaves, they don't disintegrate the way I'm promised they will. And so, there's a temptation to rake them all in the spring. But then I remember them saying they don't like having to deal with all that. So, that may become something that also has to be dealt with.
Absolutely. Alder Person Kilburg?
Oh, I just had, actually, because we were discussing compensation tonight, I did a little research, and that's why I had the information that I did before. But I thought I'd share that, and I think it is probably time for the council to review comp for the aldermen and the mayor as well. As I said before, the last time the council received any type of an increase was in 1997, so that's 26 years ago. We're currently at 36. I'm suggesting we go to 48. I'm suggesting that the mayor goes from 18,500 to 22,000. And to compare our sister cities, Batavia, Marshoki's compensated $31,250, aldermen $4,800, which I'm suggesting we go to. St. Charles, the mayor is at 17,500. Now, there might be some other benefits there that we're not aware of. Their aldermen are comped at $5,250 annually. So, I'm suggesting also that this would be implemented then at the beginning of the fiscal year, the new fiscal year. So, I, I don't know when we'd want to review it or have discussion on it, but I'm just throwing that out. But, you know, I think there are a couple of things. I think that as an alderman, you have incidental expenses because you're an alderman. People find you, as they find the mayor. And the other thing is, I think it might have some small bearing on people's interest in serving. Now, I don't know if it's $1,200 that's gonna make that much of a difference, but I'm saying that the people that are prepared to come forward and run for alderman, if you've looked at it over the last three or four cycles, there have been very few contested races. So, I'm saying that this might be of some benefit, or at least what it does, it gets us on a par with our sister cities.
Alder Person Mayor?
I just want to point out that 3,600 adjusted for inflation since 1997 is actually $6,964. So, I would, I'd bump that up. Dean?
Well, see, in 97, when we created those, we didn't have phones, so we just kind of winged it.
Well, I sent you a page.
On my pager, yes. Thanks for bringing that up. Anyone else? New business?
I would support.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Good.
Sorry, it sounds like a process, a different process from our employees' compensation, but I, I think it bears, I think it bears looking at. Sure.
Any other new business by anyone? Alder Person Maladra, any new business?
No new business. Looking forward to the discussion about aldermanic pay. I'll just, I was just sad, vote that we make it zero.
For the record, sure, that nobody heard Alder Person-
That's true. He's agreed to recuse himself. That's awesome.
How about a motion to adjourn? Alder Person Kosarag makes that motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Alder Person Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Aye. Thank you with enthusiasm. Good night, everyone.